Good afternoon. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission for May 3, 2007. It is 2:30. We're exactly on time. We have a quorum present. Mrs. Cohen is absent, but the four other members are present, so we do have a quorum. I don't have anybody to administer an oath to because there was no one here. Except Steve. Steve, do you plan to say anything? Do you swear to tell the truth that you're going to? You do?
I will.
Okay. There's no one here. I'm sorry. I didn't count you as a person.
I did swear that my tail was on it.
Okay. So you don't have to deal with it.
I do it all the time.
All right. We don't have any cases listed here. What happened to? We have no cases. We have communications, I believe. That was why. We had a number of communications that came after this. All right. We have one dated. Let's see. One, two. Two of them deal with the summit at Coates Run. One deals with the Renzelli property on East State and the other on the McDade property on East State. Is that all I have here? Anybody have any questions about these communications? I do. Well, it doesn't have to be any order. Did you want to speak about any of your properties, something?
Yes, I did.
Well, we don't have any order. All we have are communications. We have no order on this. And since, rather than go through communications that have nothing to do with you if you want to, if you like to say something or if you have anything you want to show us.
Well, we actually have.
You have to come up to the mic and say who you are. I didn't swear you in, so we take sworn statements. Do you affirm that everything you say will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just identify yourself so we can hear the TV.
Yes. I'm Mark Spezza, Century 21, Classic Gold. I'm here to speak about the Ed Renzelli property on East State Street. We have completed a survey. The surveyor, Thomas Smith, has filed the survey with the county engineer, and we will need final plat approval by the planning commission. Steve has the original copies of that survey that he's handing you right now.
We can look at this one. I can look at that one. Here, we'll look at this one.
On Tuesday, the 24th, I met with Ray Hasslett, Nick Carr, and Scott Lambert, and we looked at the options for sewage to this property. There appears to be several options. One of the options, we would need an easement from the McB property. The other option would be a forced line out west on East State Street to a manhole in front of the McB property. So we do have two options there. We have a dedicated area in front of three of the lots there, lot five, four, and three, I believe it is, that we have set aside as a 50-foot easement for access to those lots. That will be a private road as of this date until a developer is identified for this So I guess we're prepared to move forward to have the planning commission review the plans and either approve or disapprove the plans.
Well, since you're not on the agenda, it wasn't advertised that we would be taking any action on that, so we wouldn't go to take any action today because the public is supposed to have a... It's my understanding that we're supposed to post this in the newspaper, and if anybody in the, has anything to say, that they would have an opportunity to come and say something.
The proposal is a minor subdivision.
Is it? Okay. So they don't have to do, we don't have to? All right. But I don't know, because it wasn't on the agenda, so this is sort of unusual, I think.
Well, we apparently had some miscommunication. We thought that was placed on the agenda. I thought it was placed on the agenda last Tuesday. I checked again this Tuesday and checked in with Steve, and he checked to see if it was on the agenda. And apparently, as I said, there was some miscommunication about whether this was actually placed on the agenda or not.
Not here. We do have the memo about water availability in the sewer, this in your file you got today. Where's the, this is 25 feet. What did you say, 50 feet in front of this?
Yes.
That counts how far up?
There's 25 here.
Here, and then that, those two together?
Yeah, it's got.
25 on each side of what's located by the dark line.
Is the dark line?
The dark line is the property line.
So you're taking 25 of the existing right-of-way?
We're taking 25 feet of a right-of-way that was deeded to Mr. Renzelli from the railroad company, CSX. That was deeded to him as a maintenance easement on his property.
So it's an existing easement.
That's correct. And that easement actually goes right up to the limited access easement from ODOT.
Is this the entryway here on track one? That's the entryway for all of them? There was a question of different cuts on. This is right here with track two.
In track two, this is Delaware Drive.
Track two here and here.
Directly across from Delaware Drive is a...
If that's where it is.
Is an entrance.
This is, there's a...
And then we've requested an entrance for track one, again being separate track.
So this, they couldn't use this and go all the way down that way? If you go here, can you come that way? If you would have a cut here, would you be able to go that way too?
Well, this easement ends here. That easement is...
So the road doesn't, you couldn't go all the way across?
That's correct. And that's for a 50-foot curb cut at the corner, west corner of track one.
Where would this lift station go? We don't know yet.
One of the...
If you use it, if you do, yeah, if you do the lift station.
The lift station would probably be on the north side of East State Street, so it would be able to accommodate the Renzelli property on the north side as well as the Wallace property.
Yeah.
I also had, I guess, a discussion with, as I said, Nick Carr and Ray Hasslett and Scott Lambert. And, you know, again, that could be, that lift station could be on either side of Delaware Drive, the east side or the west side. My suggestion would be that it would be on the east side of Delaware Drive and give the WOODO project an opportunity to tap into that pump station as well, so that, again, you're consolidating all of your sewage into one forced line down the north side of East State Street to the McB station.
So is Mr. Renzelli proposing to construct that now?
Mr. Renzelli is not proposing to construct it. Mr. Renzelli is wanting to get the north side of his property surveyed so that we can proceed with going to auction and finding a developer. Now, we are talking to an individual developer from Columbus right now, and that may change, but for right now, Mr. Renzelli would like the property sold as soon as possible, and our option along those lines would be auction.
Okay. I'm just thinking the WOODO option only exists for a while because they're supposed to be open by the end of the year.
Yeah. Well, I called and talked to Jean Kenny, and, again, just entered into some preliminary thoughts about how with the potential development on East State Street, on that end of East State Street, how instead of having three or four properties with individual lines running to that pump station, how there may be some thought that we might be able to coordinate and create one pump station and tile those properties in. I don't know her elevation. I don't know her engineering, but there could be a possibility that she would not need to pump her sewage to that station, and it would be a freefall to that station, depending on her elevation. And we believe that when we survey the properties on the north side of East State Street, again, those will all free-flow into, could potentially free-flow into a pump station there right at Delaware Drive. We would think that we would probably need a station, and this is just based on preliminary conversations with Nick Carr and Scott Lambert, that you would probably need to be looking at a station the size of the one at Taco Bell, in front of Taco Bell.
Yeah, it's hard to size it when you haven't got a developer yet.
Yeah.
Don't know what's going to get built there.
Yeah. Well, we're just saying, we don't, yeah, we don't know, and, you know, again, depending on what developer comes in and what their requests are, but, you know, again, we believe that there is the ability to run the sewage along the right-of-way on East State Street. And whether that's, you know, individual sewage from each individual property or combined into one larger pump station, you know, again, that would probably depend on what's going in there.
Elevation-wise, are these tracks going to take quite a bit of fill, or at least for the buildings that go there?
I actually, and it's not on this survey, but I do have, I do have another document with me that shows some of the elevation out there, and would be happy to share that with you right now.
I was just curious because it's...
It was actually...
Once you do that, it can get into a whole stormwater system, but that's...
Yeah. I was actually surprised at the elevation out there, that it is a lot more consistent than I thought throughout the whole Renzelli property. We have spot elevation in several locations. Of course, some of the lowest elevation is in that 25-foot easement from CSX.
Right.
Which, you know, again, if we're putting a road in there, it would probably have to be built up, and, you know, if, in fact, that's where the sewage would go, that would have to be built up to tie into the other properties.
You know, one of the key things in our discussions about this whole area is there are so many, there are so many issues of conjecture at this point because we don't know. There are a lot of what-ifs. There are a lot of good possibilities and good potentials, but we just don't know at this point what direction it's going to go, so...
Well, you know, again, as I said, what we would like to do is, again, get our plat approved so that we can start scheduling an auction. And, you know, again, you know, we're wanting to cooperate with whatever developers come in, and I'd like to assure, you know, the city that we're going to let the developers know they'll have to work with the city on all aspects of this. Also, just to kind of give you a heads-up on the property that is now currently owned by Holzer Docks, which is the old Columbia Gas property. That survey is probably about 95% complete. It's being surveyed into three lots, and I'm encouraging the owners of that property to go through an annexation process with the city. So as we get that survey done and I have a little more information, I'll fill Ray in on where we're at with that.
Okay. What is the question?
Any questions?
I guess I'm Pearson. I want to hear Steve's review from the standpoint.
Okay. I don't think they have any questions from you they want to hear.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have a, Steve, did you have an opportunity to look at this in respect to, with the depth ratios and all the other, I mean, does it comply with the code, I guess?
My name's Steve Pearson. I'm the zoning administrator and director of code enforcement for the city of Athens. During the course of time, as this has been proposed, I've worked with Mr. Spezza, in particular with the width-to-depth ratio, to determine if any variances might also be necessary in this request for subdivision. My last review, which was not based on an actual survey, but on a proposal, which I believe is very similar to this one, was that none of these lots required a width-to-depth ratio variance. The longest, skinniest one...
Track one.
Would be the first one.
Yeah. They didn't meet.
Yeah.
374.
Yeah, whatever.
300, I think.
300 feet, so you could go 900 feet deep, and the longest leg looks like 774 feet. So even though they are narrow, they do fall within that maximum allowable width-to-depth ratio.
Is that 774 the full depth? Because there's a 100-foot designation in the front, then the 774, and then the 38.
It's here and here.
All right. I'm just...
I think there's an 813 there.
Yeah, 813 here. Mm-hmm. That's the whole thing, the 813? Add it up. Somebody added up in your head.
Yeah, 813 is the whole thing. That's what I was hearing.
It may be that 774 and the 100 indicated on one side of the line are two different
measurements. I'm not sure why that doesn't total 874 and why it says 819 on the other side of the line.
Yeah, that's the sum of 38 and 774.
Yeah.
Yes. And then there's another 100-foot length on the rail bed itself.
See, that might kick it out with the depth ratio.
Well, I think you, I think I was under the impression you did an average of both legs and what runs across the front. So you do an average, and that should, that should fall within the 31 ratio.
In times past, I've done a fairly complex appraisal for determination of width-to-depth, measuring at different points along a lot. For the past several years, the procedure has been just to simply add the front and the back together, divide by two, that's your average width, add the two sides together, divide by two, that's your average depth.
If I'm getting your drift, you're saying you haven't studied it in depth to make a recommendation to us?
Uh...
The final, the what?
No, I've not. I can do that.
Well, we can schedule it for the next session. That's no problem. And I give you time to do it. Why don't you just...
We'll see an actual...
My understanding, Mr. Spezza, that Mr. Renzelli wants to survey the property on the north side before he does this auction?
We're going to start scheduling the auction, and at least auction off the property on the south side. We meant, hold on, a second auction on the property on the north side. He indicated to me that he would like that auction to happen as soon as possible, so , you know, again, if that's, that's incorrect, that he was about to do it, we'll probably be looking at that. I'm guessing another month to maybe six weeks until we get the north side done. They haven't started on that side.
Oh, okay. I was just inquiring really if the two weeks was critical, if we do this in two weeks and have it already. Is that a problem?
If we can have, if we have it in two weeks, I can at least get started with...
Right. Because I think the only thing we want to do, because it's five lots, which is, meets the code, and obviously they're of sufficient size to meet the code in the zone that they're in, it's just making all the different calculations and making sure there isn't any difficulty by staff to do it. And then, on that basis, I mean, I think, once it's done by the planning commission, it's done. It doesn't go anywhere else. So I think you could plan on that basis.
You know, and again, if we have, you know, if we have some indication, again, that these lots fall within, you know, acceptable ranges, et cetera, I will go ahead and probably contact the auctioneer, who I believe is in Chillicothe, and have him set up, because he'll have to, he'll have to produce flyers and all of that stuff.
Sure.
So I'll have him go ahead and at least get started with that. So I wouldn't think the two weeks would really interfere with that process.
Right. Because all is down to now is, is there any potential variances we need to grant on it? And that's it.
Okay.
What's our other communication?
Well, so then that will just go on the, be put on the agenda for the next meeting, so... We have, well, the other communication is about the property, the Dade property, which is on the other side of the street, but...
Same side of the street.
No. Oh, yeah, the McDade is on.
That's already, that's already gone to guard and council.
Okay. Well, I just, that's my other communication I'm telling we got. Okay. And then we have two about Coates Run. One is April 19th, and has a copy of the letter from Burgess and Michael to Ray about the, of course, we don't have anything to do with this now, do we? And the other one is April 27th, where the South Side Community Association is asked that, they're appealing the decision to issue a use permit for Coates Run. I do not know how an appeal operates. How does an appeal operate? A decision to issue a permit to whom?
That was the one that started. They don't have your response.
I don't have any. That's all we had, is communications and questions, and that's all.
Response to this letter's been issued. I spoke with Gary Hunter, city law director, about it. Applicable case law is a 1988 Ohio State Supreme Court case. It's called Walco Trucking versus the Townage Board of Zoning Appeals. The way that, the way the city law is written, as far as appeals of decisions of the zoning administrator is written, it says that you can appeal an approval or a refusal to the board. However, boards of zoning appeals that are created by municipalities according to state law don't have jurisdiction to exercise powers greater than those given to them by those state-enabling laws. State law that enables, in our case, city council to create this appeals board, says that anyone aggrieved by a refusal only, just a refusal of a permit application, can appeal to the zoning board. In the case of Walco Townage, Walco was a trucking company. It was given a permit to expand their trucking facility, and a joining neighbor who was agreed by the decision tried to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they did go through that process. Eventually, the case came before the state Supreme Court, which overturned the trial court's decision, and it said that state legislatures, state legislators, in their language, appeared not to want to give the Board of Zoning Appeals the power to hear appeals from approvals. So I wrote a letter back in response to that and said that the appropriate method of appeal was for a request for injunction, which I also sent a copy of the court's decision to the neighborhood association. I've not heard anything back from them regarding that letter, but that's what's happened since you received that letter.
Well, I think it was on the radio that I heard, but it was never, it was just saying that they were, they wanted to appeal it. That's all I heard on the radio when I was reading it.
I can get you a copy of the response letter, if you'd like.
I don't need to have it. I just wondered, you know, what happened after this. Okay. That's the only other, these are just for our information here, the Burgess and Michael thing about Coates Run, the summit. Does anybody call that the summit, or do they just call it Coates Run?
The summit at Coates Run.
That's what the developer's trying to call it.
That's what they're trying to call it, but I don't know what the people call it. Oh, the other, do we have any nouns? We don't have any citizens to speak. Anybody, citizen, want to speak here?
Again, I have some other communications.
You always have communications. Look at, go ahead. We might as well have them if we came, so...
You've got a big stack.
He's got a big stack of them.
There's one for this code. Couple meetings ago, you'd asked about temporary signage, and we've been discussing temporary signage.
Yes.
And so I have some more things about temporary signage.
The first thing that I've given you is I want to reference on the right-hand column, section 230313L3, real estate signs. These signs, these types of signs are permitted without requiring a permit application. They're like for sale, for rent signs, those kinds of things. This section identifies the size limitations, and there's another section in the code which also says that they can be yard signs or they can be placed on the wall of a building. They just can't exceed the size limitations. The section that I'd like to point out, and, you know, I don't expect any decision today, but just for something to think about, the only requirement in this regulation is that the sign come down 14 days after the lease or sale of the property. It doesn't say anything then about how quickly you can put them back up. So I know a lot of people are concerned about real estate signs that they seem to see on walls and in yards constantly. I'd just like to point out that the only code limitation is that the sign come down 14 days after occupancy or sale. That leaves, I don't know what, for the other 50 weeks a year. So it doesn't seem to prohibit its posting at day 15. And I think that's where some people become confused when they do see these signs all the time. There's really nothing in the regulations, actually, the thing in the regulations, it says that they can't be, that they're permitted without a permit. They're allowed without a permit.
Well, this, of course, is here where I think there should be a change made, because I will tell you that that house on Campbell or that Watt that goes over there, they've had that sign hanging off their upper balcony all year. I mean, it has never come down. They don't, if they take it down, it's in the middle of the night, and I would have to go out there and watch these signs come down for one night and then put back up. Because in this town, they're always, I mean, they're always for rent.
Right. But you could put, maybe you'd have to check some other codes, Steve, but we could possibly put in that lease or rental signs may be erected 30 days prior to the end of the current lease, something like that. So you are limiting that, you can't put the for-rent sign up until, you know, usually in most rental properties, the renter has an option of renewal in many of them, but you usually always have to let the person know at least 30 days prior to it, so you would know that it's going to be vacant, and then you could use your other methods... And then you could use your other methods of advertising outside of signage to do the other. Is that what you're, are you seeing anything like that in other codes, or?
I haven't really done a whole lot of research on that.
And you were saying?
In administrative terms, that would, no, it's hard to track them, they're all over town all the time.
I know, but I mean...
That's the problem.
But, that, that's, I mean, something has to be done, because that's, people really, they have a legitimate complaint, because they do not take them down, it stays up all the time, and, because they're always for rent, those things are never, somebody's in there, but they're for rent, and they're so far ahead, it seems to me that somehow there should be some moratorium, and you can't start renting for two years. They're renting for 808 now. They already rented for 08. I have a friend who has property, and they're renting for 09 afterwards.
Good Lord.
And so, you know, it's ridiculous, it gets to be ridiculous, and people...
Well, you could say they could erect it upon notification and documentation received by the code office. If you don't have some documentation for something, there, then we have to assume they're up illegally, and then we have to put something in their teeth wise to be able to say the ability to get them down, or fine, and it has to be significant enough. I mean, it's, when you find somebody $50 or $100, it may be, well, you know, with the cost of newspaper advertising and everything else, it may be, so there's, crafting words somewhere around that area, if you could look up in some other codes, see if anything's there, that's, I think, where the board kind of wants to be.
Well, and it'd be, obviously, college communities.
Then we'd probably hardly ever see them, because they'd already be rented to 09.
And maybe a way to control the frequency of repeat display that, you know, that falls within the purview of the law, and that would be easier to administer, because you could use a database by address, and if they're, say they're limited to four times per year for 30, for 30 days at a time, or two times a year for 30 days at a time, then you might, that might be, that might be enforceable.
We'd have to untie the two sections, because, I mean, I think real estate for sale is totally different than rental.
That's right, oh, that's right, you know, it has...
You know, they're totally different.
It has, and it, he would have to check other college communities where there are these things, because it certainly isn't going to be the same in a big city, or that sort of thing, I wouldn't think. But, I don't think the people for sale, that's a completely different thing, it's just this madness about renting these things in advance.
I just wanted to bring it up, because I know there's been some question about them, and I just kind of wanted to illustrate to everyone the regulation that I have to work with right now, and why it does need to be modified somewhat in order to, you know, get a little better handle on the situation. You know, I'm not, I'm not an advocate for these signs on the buildings for 50...
Well, but they're two different...
And they do end up being somewhat like advertising, too, if they're up for that long.
They're two different aspects, these are signs that say the things are for rent, but, you know, I also have had all these complaints about this university, whatever the one uses, puts their signs on, and people who don't live in the central city don't get bent out of shape by this, but people who do, this is a sure sign in your neighborhood, that this is kind of turning into a student neighborhood, and I'm sorry, that's what the problem is. I mean, maybe it's not politically correct to say that, but that is what the problem is, and the signs showing that this is a rental property just drives people out of there, so...
I had addressed this previously, and it ended up being a common police court case.
I know that, I know.
I cited university off-campus housing for off-site advertising, the Board of Zoning Appeals upheld my decision, the owner of the company appealed to common police court, and common pleas upheld the zoning board's decision. But those signs said managed by, and some of these other signs then got changed to just for rent. Managed by was taken off, or rent was put on, and they became real estate signs. So, again, something needs to be done.
Well, they have their name, they're advertising because their name of the company's on it. The name of the organization is on those signs.
Sure.
So, I mean, those are advertising...
The names of the realtors who are selling properties is on their signs, too.
Well, I think Steve knows what to do.
I know, I know where you're going, and I'll try to find something.
We're just saying that the envelope has been pushed too far within the tenets of the law, so we need to look at the law to see where we can strengthen it.
That's right.
I can look some things up then, and give you a recommendation, possibly at the next meeting, so.
That was now...
Speaking of that, places for sale and so, and, I'm not going to say the name of where it was, but you can't park on the grass, sort of type thing, in Astor, and did you notice one person who had sold their house had their trailer in the front yard for how long?
I noticed.
Yeah, we had to follow up, yeah, we had to follow up on that.
Yeah, it was about, you know, people, they, I don't know why they think that they should be able to like, to do things like that, it's just beyond me. I mean, on the day, you're doing it fine, but for weeks, days?
The next one's tied into requests that I've had from a new tenant at the University Mall related to wall signage. Right-hand column, second paragraph down is a definition of a wall or panel sign, just says something that's attached to a wall or a roof. On the second page, left-hand column, number four, F4, it talks about the signable wall area and how that's determined, which drives how large the sign can be on a wall. On the third page, right-hand column, small letter I, it talks about permissible wall signage in R3, B1, B2, B3, and M zones. If you look down toward the bottom, it says, related to the setback distance from the corner or a party wall of a building, and it says essentially, 10% of the width of a wall, you can't put the sign there, or 10% off of a common wall or a party wall. Here's the problem I'm having right now, I have businesses that are coming to the University Mall that have no exterior wall to put a sign on. Some have only exterior wall that points back to the hillside, and those new businesses that might come to the mall, and one that's there in particular, would like to be able to put a wall sign on the front of the mall. But this regulation here seems to prohibit that. You'd have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for that.
Didn't we do something about that, though, at some point, when the Athens Mall had the same problem? Because there were people with interior, because they had a little courtyard, like, hallway for a while, and then they did panel things on the front, identifying, and I didn't, was that a different type of sign?
I believe that was done before I came to work for the city. They had come, the developer had come to the Board of Zoning Appeals to ask for a variance for maximum canopy signage allowed. That's how that happened. So, they went to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they wanted more than five square feet of graphics on a canopy. There was a canopy that that advertising was on, or that identification. So, the Board of Zoning Appeals granted the variance for that. So, essentially, interior businesses were able to advertise on the canopy, or the wall that faced East State Street.
But didn't they also advertise on a thing outside, you know, one of those big signs, everybody had a little sign on there? Do malls have, how many, how many malls have signs on the outside when you go out to them? Does Eastern have signs on the outside? Does, um, big malls, do they have signs on the outside? I don't think so. I don't think so.
I'm not sure, I don't get out much.
Yeah, it's kind of a combination.
Yeah, but some of those, they've made them all strip malls now, but maybe some of the big stores, if you happen to have a sign that goes to the highway sometimes, you see, but I thought the point to malls was that they were, you could put them in places, and they would be attractive parts of the community, and you would have just the one sign out front telling you what kind of mall it was, and, I don't know. You know me, I don't like signs at all, I'd get rid of them all, or just have little ones.
I just wanted to point that section out, too. The way I'm going to proceed with this when I get back with, unless I hear something a little different, is I'm just going to tell them they'll have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to appeal for a sign on a wall that's not their wall. That's all I know to do with it right now, and that's consistent, I think, with the canopy on Athens Mall, case that you just spoke to.
You'd have a problem if you had a narrow shop at the end of the mall also, you'd have an outside wall, but your entire outside wall would be less than 10% of the total available space, so you wouldn't be allowed to mount one.
Yeah. You may only have, say, your delivery door, area is not very wide, and it goes back a hallway, and then you're, you're an interior business, and you'd be limited to that width of the wall, right there where your delivery door was at, so, just something I wanted to point out.
Some of those aren't very wide in there, some of those stores are not that big. I wish they hadn't painted it that ugly, dirty color.
Another reason I bring it up, too, is...
Get the feeling I don't like the color?
As, as tenants may come to the University Mall, they'll have, any one of them that's in the corridor inside will have no ability to advertise on the outside of the building, so, that's, because, you know, hopefully occupancy will increase there, but they have no way of advertising except from the freestanding sign out front, who's actually inside the mall. So, that was the concern from the business owner.
Well, city center doesn't have any. Okay, do you have any more stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, he's got more stuff.
I asked you to review the code to see, while we're in the signs, and I want to go back to it the next two, two or three years. Just tell me all of the problems you have with it, light on us.
I'm overloading, I can only get two more.
Okay, two more.
These are the easy ones.
Okay.
Next one is, I know some people have expressed concern about large inflatable balloons, and that people believe that they must be some kind of violation in the code, because, in the code, because they've heard that these types of balloons are prohibited. And 230313S is a section called prohibited signs, it has several different kinds that are prohibited. The very first one are balloons and searchlights are prohibited signs. However, in the second sentence of that S1 section, it says, such devices may be permitted on a temporary basis to advertise special events if approved by the zoning administrator. It doesn't say how often you can apply, it doesn't say what the criteria for application is, it doesn't say how many of special events you may have.
And how you define, how do you define special events?
Right. So, the existing language kind of creates a problem. You have a sign that can be permitted under a section that says it's prohibited, so, and it's left essentially just up to the zoning administrator to make the decision. So, you know, I mean, this might be an extreme example, but, you know, I really, I don't like big blue monkeys, but I love little brown dogs, or big brown dogs. You know, what's the criteria? How could I say yes or no to one group, organization, business owner?
Just say no to everybody.
Um...
It's easiest.
For me, or for the zoning administrator, whoever that person may be in the future, simply striking that sentence and prohibiting those large balloons would make it very simple, and then everyone who did do that would be in violation. But right now, there's, they're allowed. They're allowed under a section that says they're prohibited.
Well, if you just, well, even if you took out, it says these are prohibited, we say balloons and searchlights, and no gas-filled balloons will be used for, on a permanent basis, it tells you up here it's prohibited, and then it says on a permanent basis, so they'd have to change that, too, because...
Right, you have to take the permanent part off.
Yeah, mhm. Just say balloons and searchlights, gas-filled balloons and searchlights, I mean, well, gas-filled balloons, not gas-filled searchlight, but, period.
You know, I've always figured these big balloons have air blowing in them, oxygen, the atmosphere is a gas, so, this may have originally just been done for helium-filled balloons, or something like that.
Let me, I would look, I was looking, let's see...
For advertising, period, just take the whole thing out.
Well, I was looking at another code from another city, and this is their prohibited things, and they're a little more flashing, moving, blinker, racer-type, intermittent, rotating, moving, animated, or revolving signs, whirly-gig devices, inflated, inflatable signs, and tethered balloons, pennants, ribbon, strimmers, spinners, exposed light bulbs, and strings of lights that's not permanently mounted on, or rigid background, and other similar types of attention-getting devices. Well, they tried to cover the world there, didn't they?
That's pretty thorough.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that, well, flashing, moving, blinking, racing, what are racer-type signs?
I don't know.
Copy.
Is that what that is? Oh, that's what makes me sick to my stomach and dizzy, I don't want those around, keep those up.
I know what the whirly-gigs are.
I like, the whirly-gigs are those things that make me sick to my stomach, too.
You'd see them on top of cars, they're three...
But they also in theirs, as I said, flags intended for advertising or commercial purposes, and, I thought they went a little far when they said permanent signs erected or attached to accessory structures, including outdoor furniture, benches, tables, chairs, and marquee signs.
And mattresses.
Well, it says equipment here someplace, where does it say it here? Merchandise, equipment, products.
Vehicles or other items not themselves for sale. That's maybe, because that's another problem we have in the code, because sometimes you'll get vendor, people out that put out a lot of display goods, like lawn mowers and stuff outside, but this one would permit that, because it doesn't say, it doesn't say merchandise, equipment, products, vehicles, or other items not themselves for sale, and placed for attention-getting identification or advertising. That one I kind of like, if you had that one in your laundry list.
There was a discussion related to the revisions of the zoning code in 2003, to outdoor display of certain types of materials. There is a section in the code that says, all business activity has to be conducted within a wholly enclosed building, and there's an exception for gas sales, you know, a few different other kinds of things. That's always come up with, you know, when I have a huge pile of mulch that I'm selling, say, this time of year, mulch is not in that list, but I've never told people to put their mulch inside the building.
Well, it sounds like this might be a way to be able to say that's, that's okay, as long as you're still meeting the parking requirements, you're not impensing, or in the public right of way.
Right, yeah. Anyway, there's one, I think this, I'll give you a recommendation on this one, because right now, it's pretty...
He's got more.
So, one more, one more, just one more, he said.
He's got more. Looks like a big one.
This is a real big one. This is something I've been promising to you, you're some questions, but I want to figure out if it's on. This one is in reference to a section on the right-hand column, number two, political and ideological signs. I think if you recall, a while back, City of Athens adopted an ordinance that increased from 336 square inches to 350 square inches, the maximum size a political sign could be. However... Go down through this a little bit, I'm going to go through these papers in a little different order than I've given them to you. Further down in your packet of information is a copy of a decision from the State of Ohio Supreme Court, it's called Painesville Building Department versus Worgen and Bernstein. It relates to time periods for which political signs can be posted, and otherwise regulating them to a degree differently than other temporary signs. This is a Supreme Court decision from 19... This is a Supreme Court decision from 1989. Clear at the end, what I did was I printed off from the Supreme Court's website, essentially a short synopsis, so it's a little dry, believe me, reading through this whole thing. But it tells the whole story of what happened up in Painesville. Painesville's the county seat of Lake County, just to give you a little reference point as to where it is in the state of Ohio. Yeah, it's called Public Information Office Opinions in Case Signs. That's a, this is the boiled-down decision. So, anyway, there is a, there is a case. This particular law firm had, the ordinance originally in Painesville limited posting to 17 days prior to an election. And it also required that the, let's see, that the sign come down, political signs come down within 48 hours after an election. So, and it didn't have a bonding requirement. City of Athens actually has on the books a $100 bond that's required. Second page in, from what you have there, is actually a copy of the ordinance from Painesville. Even though this decision happened in 2000, they didn't actually change their ordinance until 2004. And if you look at it, they've got it in a format that we do use similarly in Athens. Ordinances when they're reviewed, the language change that's eliminated has a line through it, and anything that's added is in bold. And so, you can see on there the things that Paines, the City of Painesville ended up eliminating and adding. For example, they say the signs must remain in, must be maintained in good repair. So, you see some temporary signs around, political signs sometimes are a little worse for wear. They did still include a period not to exceed 30 days. What they didn't do was say 30 days in advance of the election, or 14 days after it's got to come down, or anything like that.
They just made it for all temporary signs, whether it was a yard sale or anything.
Yeah. And that's basically what's described in the next section of the information I gave you. It's from the Center for Individual Freedom in Alexandria, Virginia. It's called sign ordinances and constitutional limitations. And it does a real good job of going through and talking, addressing signage and how you can and cannot address it based on, say, its content, or its size, or there's a lot of different things. So, this is just a general overview of constitutional restrictions on regulating signage. And the other one that I gave you, Painesville versus Worgen Bernstein, is actually an Ohio So, it's just something to think about. Their ordinance does still regulate the maximum size. If you looked at it there, it says, I believe, let's see here, 16 square feet is the maximum size. But I think, as the mayor mentioned there, too, in order to be consistent, you can't over-regulate, say, different types of temporary signs more strictly just because of their content or what they are. You have to, your ordinance to hold up is going to have to be fairly consistent from sign to sign.
So, we'd have difficulty differentiating between a for-sale versus for-rent sign?
That would be a good example of the first thing that I just brought up to you. It'd be probably a lot more defensible if you, like right now, real estate signs can be five square feet in area. If you limited political signs to five square feet in area, you could never be accused of being inconsistent in the amount that was allowed, irregardless of the content of the sign. So, this is just the example of what they did up in Painesville. I talked to people in their zoning and building department, talked to their clerk counsel. To be real honest with you, they didn't want to discuss it too much. But I think what we can do, and for the sake of everybody, and to keep a level playing field, at least for political signs, is, you know, the city needs to do something to treat all signs consistently, and so everyone knows just exactly, you know, what the rules are, what the upper limits are to things. So, and to me, that just seems fair and reasonable. And there would be public interest not to allow them to be huge. This 16 square feet seems pretty excessive to me, but there's something I've been promising to give you for quite a while.
Well, thank you very much.
But I'll try to do a little more research on that. I'd hope by getting a copy of the Painesville ordinance, we could just substitute Athens for Painesville, but after I got it, it doesn't look like that's possible. But I'll come up with something on that.
But what about, is it covered, you know, you have real estate companies that will put signs out for, they help you advertise your yard sale, but some of those are bigger than the usual things, aren't they? Different, and sometimes you see a bigger real estate sign than others do, but if everything had to be the same size, it's.
Or have a maximum.
There are things called trailblazer signs that are permitted. However, they are not permitted to be off-site, and they can only be up for a maximum of three days. So, and that's another one that's a little challenging to enforce, because usually these things start on Friday and end on Sunday.
Yeah, and there's.
And.
And they do put them, some of those, they do put them down on another piece of property, and the thing is way up the street.
Yeah, that happens a lot, especially on the weekends.
Well.
But just so you know, I had pointed out to you, too, that I've got a whole new system now dealing with temporary advertising. Officers have been out and visited probably, well, quite a few places. And if you see fewer temporary signs around town now, that's why. One of the things I have been doing, too, is off-site advertising is not permitted, as I pointed out, what I had cited University Off Campus Housing for several years ago. We're starting to get a proliferation of these real estate signs that are off-site, little tiny sign stuck in the ground, arrow, go this way. I've already set up a procedure at the office where what officers are supposed to do is when they see one of these signs, usually they're in the right-of-way, they have to remove the sign, go to the address of the realtor or the person who's doing that off-site advertising, give them the copy of the regulations, and return their sign to them. So, we're not just pulling them, taking them back to the office, and throwing them in the dumpster. We're trying to do a little educational thing, and hopefully now, once we do that quite, you know, a few times, if we visit someone too often, we'll have a history of we've tried to work with them and get compliance. Well, my office is finding now, when we make personal contact, be it for mowing grass, picking up litter, really any kind of contact we make with people in general, we're finding about a 90% compliance rate. We just went through notifying 64 people that their grass needed to be mowed without going through the whole process of sending certified letters at about $5 a letter. Of the 64 properties, 57 of those properties mowed their grass. So, all we had to do was drive back by. We had seven people that didn't, and seven certified letters have gone out, and our mowing contractor will be notified of that. We made another, that was last week. This week, we made, that was in the 50s, almost 60 more contacts for grass mowing, and I expect right around that nine out of 10 percentage of compliance. So, saves a lot of paper, saves a lot of postage, saves a lot of aggravation, saves a lot of follow-up. And I think, you know, once the word gets out that way, that we're not, we're not out there to take you to court or find you. What we're trying to do is get grass cut, get trash picked up, get trash cans put back, get permits on temporary signs. So, so you know, that's kind of the mode of operation that the code office is in. And I'll find some more for you, and I'll bring you back some recommendations.
He studied with saving paper, and he's using the paper he's saving there to bring to us.
Well, everybody needs a constitutional primer on sign ordinances that keep in their library, right?
They do. I have nothing to do at home tonight. I can go.
There are a copy of Painesville to work in their Walco damage, but I can recycle all that for you. Thank you very much for listening to all that.
Well, thank you.
And I'll come up with some more.
Thank you for doing all the work.
Challenging things, especially in the sign ordinance, since that's.
Well, work on those newspaper things that's on the streets. Put that in there someplace. You know, those ugly little things that they put on the streets?
Newspaper boxes?
Yeah.
I've made recommendations several times.
I know you have.
Regarding that, and that's been also brought up as a freedom of speech issue.
Oh, that's tiresome.
And I don't believe it's anybody's, my belief is it's not freedom of speech for anybody to just get to use the sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
In a lot of communities, and I pointed this out before, if that be the case, where do you stop? Newspapers, are they okay? What about if I'm a realtor? You've seen the ones where realtors have the same kind of box. In bigger cities, there's some advertising that happens out of those kinds of boxes that I don't even want to talk about. Anything that you can print could be put in one of those boxes. And if you said that it was reserved for anybody to use the public where the sidewalk because of freedom of speech, I think is not correct. And in the recommendations I've made before, you know, I've cited cases from other cities where the idea of freedom of speech and newspaper boxes has been separated. I'd recommend it actually that they all, you'd have to have a permit on them to put them on the street. A lot of towns put them in an enclosure.
In one spot.
So, you're not advertising to the street. They don't block line of sight. They're not a traffic problem. They don't impede pedestrian traffic at corners. Everybody has to have a box the same size, and you just slide it in this enclosure and slide it out, and it's all permitted, because it is use of public, you know, public right-of-way, public sidewalks. But you're right, they're just, right now, I can't, can't do anything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, the other thing we have are, he's still, that was just communications. We are on now, there's no citizen. Announcements and other business. Our next meeting is scheduled two weeks. We have one because we told him he would be on it. Minutes. Is anybody?
I would, I would move to approve the minutes of April 19th.
Somebody needs to second that.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's all we have, except number seven.
Move for adjournment.
Three.
You don't have to get me.
Three thirty-two, I think that says. No, thirty-three it says over there. I got my new glasses, I can see better. Nobody even noticed my new glasses. I can see the signs, I can see them. Okay. That's all we need to do today.